Forrest is coming to yell up. Or one of these other guys will be happy to tell you to do that.
You better take your position, Mr. Briggs. Guard that flank over there.
He's the only one not wearing a dark colored coat.
Except us to keep these straight.
He didn't get the mail. No, it's an email. He didn't get the email.
That's right. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is time for us to call the regular September 12, 2017 Madison County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let's all rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now have a moment of silence. And a moment of personal privilege. Let us not forget in our thoughts and prayers, all those of our fellow citizens who have been harmed and put in great risk of peril these last few days. We'll now have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now turn to the agenda. We need to make one addition under Section 8. It will be an amended Part D, which you should have in your books, and it is a request from Dr. Cosby for a special provision for the school system. That will be added as 8D. Chair will entertain a motion. We approve the amended agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The amended agenda has been approved. All right, now let us look at the August 8 and August 22 minutes.
Haven't already reviewed them, I'll make the motion that they, or I move that they both, both sets of minutes be approved as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wecton, second by Commissioner Brigham. That as submitted, both sets be approved. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Both sets of minutes for the August 8 and August 22 meetings are hereby approved. Being no one having signed up for public comment, we will move on. Ms. Laurie, you're up.
Good evening. I am here tonight to present my annual settlement to the board for their acceptance and approval, and also to present an insolvent list to be approved for accounts that are, and bills that are insolvent that are no longer collectible by the county. And I have several reports attached, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does that write those off completely, or are those just, they're completely done and over with and gone?
Those are all personal property. There's no real estate that's included in that list, it's just personal property. Most of those are folks that we are no longer able to locate, out of state or deceased. We do send notices to the estates of deceased persons who have not had any responses.
So it's like the equivalent of a bad debt write-off, essentially?
Pretty much.
Thank you.
You do put a lien against the estate if they have one. That's all you do.
And just for the record, Laurie, if you please double check me on page nine of nine. Are we talking about a total of $26,170 that anyone sent?
We are, and that amount includes, this list includes county taxes, fire tax, interest. So it's not just the county tax, all those numbers are included in this table.
Okay. And that is for years running, concluding current, all the way back to 2003, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Do any members of the board have any questions or clarification?
Yeah.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's annual settlement, as well as to approve the insolvance and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate document which is included in her presentation.
So move that we do that?
Move by Commissioner Brigham.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Laurie, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank all the people that work for you, thank Donnie, everybody involved. You guys do a wonderful job. I know it's oftentimes not an easy job. It'll be better after you get your new software.
I appreciate your support.
Well, you guys do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laurie.
Yes, why don't you point that out?
Laurie, thank you for the 95.5% collection rate. Outstanding job. I think y'all have come from, what was it, one time 92 or so. Someone only got four and a half more percent, we'll be there. Thank you, consistently.
Mr. Donnie Lost.
All ready?
Yes, sir.
Right along. You've got this month's delinquency report in your package. And, and we're moving consistently. I mean, the total collected this month, 71,000. So that's, if you break things down monthly, first two months of this fiscal year, we've actually been above that. I mean, that's, I'm just keeping my fingers crossed, I'm waiting for one of those bad months, but, but we're doing good so far. But what I'd like to point out, this month is something that I knew would happen, and we're starting to see it happen. I have listed, at the bottom of the cover sheet, pay prior to attorney referral. And I think that is important to look at, because what we've been, what we've been doing is that a lot of what we've been collecting, have been forced collections. We file a lawsuit, after a while, someone comes in and pays, and...
We have that particular document.
We don't have to pay, do you, they're showing the amount.
You don't have this?
No, sir. No, sir.
We'll send it to y'all later.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, okay. I've got on here, the total collected was 71,719 for this month. We have nine accounts that, for the most part, there's some quick math here, it's going to be about 55,000 that we have collected through payment agreements or forced collection. There are three accounts on here that are under a category called paid prior to attorney referral. So, you know, what we're after is not to force folks to pay their taxes, because when it's forced, the bad thing about that is that they gotta pay money, okay? And the legal fees on top of that, you know, that's something that most folks, it's bad enough for them to have to pay their taxes, but to pay the lawyer that's collecting it for them, is even worse. But what that's creating now is, I think, word around the county that, whoa, you know, these folks are serious about collecting taxes. We better not wait till the boogeyman comes, you know? Don't wait till the lawsuits file. So what we're starting to see, I think, are folks that might have accounts that are out there that, you know, know that they're not paid. And those folks are starting to come in and pay their accounts ahead of time. And hopefully, what that'll eventually lead to is that as we collect these bad taxes, that you're not going to see two, three, four years build up. So, you know, I, the reason I wanted that to be, be in there is that I think, you know, that there's starting to be somewhat of a mentality that, you know, folks know that, that you're serious about tax collection. So that message is getting across, they're going to pay their taxes. I think you've seen evidence of that twice tonight. What I pointed out to you, and what Clayton pointed out to you, we're up to a 95.5% collection rate. So that means you've got 3.5% of your more people that are out there paying their taxes. And that's what we're all about, is getting that paid without any type of forced collection.
Five percent. It was 94.
Oh, was it 94? Well, that's even better.
Yeah.
So, and, so we're getting some collections in, both forced and voluntary, and we are, we're trying to keep, you know, a steady stream coming in. I don't know if you got the other sheet, that there's actually been 12 additional cases that have been referred to.
Yes, we do.
That Laurie, that we'll put, we'll put into the machine and hope that those rolled out, and, and, and that should enable us to keep providing to you a positive report of collected taxes. Any questions?
Ms. Lost, I have a question. Of the properties that we have foreclosed on, and that the county now owns, you know, we have negotiated a contract with a real estate firm, and, you know, my desire would be to have those properties listed in there, so that more people could see those. How do you feel about that?
I think that's an excellent idea, and in fact, Forrest and Sarah and I have been, over the past couple of weeks, been negotiating and putting the language that needs, of course, there's a process to that. You've approved the listing agreement. I think Forrest has the paperwork, he and I spoke about that even before this meeting, to actually execute the listing agreement, which is going to be, which is going to provide multiple parcels of land to be listed with the Realtor. And, you know, what we've been trying to do is, is, is list surplus property on the county's website, and, and your administrators, administration can wear a lot of hats, but being a Realtor is one that is difficult. But we get this property listed, and then it will go on MLA, I think that more soft trying to not get suckered, MLS sheets, multiple listing sheets, which will then make all of those properties available to all your Realtors in the area. So we've got a pretty good inventory of property, especially when we, we get the breakaway property added to that, so. So that, that's, and that'll be an excellent source of recouping, you know, what we, what the county has actually had to buy back. Of course, you know, when the county buys it back, we don't replenish Laurie's coffers nor heirs, but we do have a piece of property. So the sooner that we can flip that piece of property and turn that around, then that is money that's going back in for these unpaid taxes, which is, you know, it's a great source of, of income. We pretty well, you know, what you're looking at here for, for I think the first two months of this fiscal year, we may have collected 90 some last the first month, and 70 this quarter, about 160. So, and, and we had lowered that revenue source to around 600 and some this year. 650. So we're, we're ahead of that projected pace, but, and now what you're looking at here is what we collect, and money's coming into us. As we sell off those surplus properties, that's the, you know, that's going to add more to that. So the sooner that we can get some of those in a position to be sold, unfortunately, as we get contracts in, we're gonna be, you know, it's a slow process, because you've got to go through approving the contract and running the notice, but Forrest and I have spoken about a procedure that I'm sure he will address with you in his comments, a better way to maybe streamline that process, so that we can move it through you all to the advertisement back approved, have it closed, and collect them out.
Thank you.
Is that actually a question?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a theme song now. You have this group, and they're up.
I'm here to present the 2018 holiday schedule for employees. We follow the state holiday schedule, we've been doing that for several years now, so it's pretty straightforward. No surprises are in here. Any questions, or?
We need a motion for us to approve this.
I move we approve the 2018 holiday calendar.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham, second by Commissioner Wecton. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed 2018 holiday calendar, please raise your right hand.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you.
Ms. Rhea.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Happy Tuesday. First thing I've got for you today is the 2018 JCPC program agreement and portion of county funding. The money they're requesting from the county is the exact same as last year, it's apportioned out into three projects. The new one that they have put out is called Kids at Work. Put a little summary on the cover page, which is a culinary program.
This has already been budgeted, has it not?
There will be a budget amendment, I think what we budgeted was 118,000, and the total is 110. Not that only, as you see, 15,597 comes from the county, but we administer the funds for it.
We budgeted based on a potential, I think, of the House or the Senate, the governor's budget included an increase in the state appropriation, which would have increased slightly to level match. So we included that larger amount, the legislature included, so.
So this will be included in the budget amendment?
Yes.
It is, I don't think I actually made it onto this current budget amendment, because they got me this part quite late, but I'll put it on the budget amendment for October. I just need you guys to approve this, and let, approve that I can sign for the county to approve the funding plan tonight.
Okay.
And what is the county's part again?
15,597 dollars, the same amount as last year.
No increase locally from last year.
Do we have a, I guess I'll direct this to Forrest. Do we have a way to determine, you know, I know 79,000 is coming from the state, I guess, the overall effectiveness of these programs? Because, I mean, if it's, if it's doing good things, I'm certainly all in favor for it, but just throwing the money out there, I'd like to know what the success has been. I mean, and I don't need, that's not a long response, just kind of quickly.
There is a juvenile crime provision council appointed by the board, and Chairman Larry Think, who has just walked in, and that board has a pretty intensive review process compared to most anything I've seen. There's a person from juvenile justice who joins all of those meetings, and requires annual monitoring for each of these programs. So somebody from that board, along with someone from the state, after their training, goes and actually reviews the programs, and then every year when organizations come for funding, we review those numbers. So there, there are different targets, but, but one of those is the recidivism, you know, what it does to reduce the number of people who are coming back through the system, what the long-term impacts are on each of those. So that is evaluated, we can get you all probably copies of those, some of those evaluations, have I missed anything? So it's, it is reviewed, but it'd be good to get you all the information, so we can, we can gather some of that.
Yep.
For y'all to see.
Well, and if, if, whatever the stipulations might be from the state to us.
Right.
If we were to not be compliant with what they had asked us to do, I assume we would be responsible for, for that money. Is it, would that be fair to say, or?
The, the contract is between the state and those organizations, with us providing some match money.
So we would have no liability there?
Okay. It would be limited to 15,000, but I'll double check on that.
Okay. Thank you, Forrest.
Other questions or comments? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the proposed funding for the North Carolina DPS community programs, including the county match of 15,597, and authorizing our finance officer to so execute. Move by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Brigham. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you, gentlemen. The second thing I have on the agenda is the August 2017 financial report. As well, a whole list of the checks that we've been out during the month of August. This is the first month that we do show in some encumbrances on here. The only encumbrances is part of the landfill budget, and I was able to break them out separately. I will continue to try to do that for you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Does any member of the board have any questions or observations? If they're being done, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the August 31, 2017 monthly report.
I move we do so.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Ms. Rhea.
The third thing I have for you, gentlemen, is the third of the budget amendment for the year.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve 2018 budget amendment number three.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wecton. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving budget amendment number three, please raise your right hand.
And the last item I have for you, gentlemen, is the August 2017 tax releases and refunds.
Made up for last month.
You know, this is cleaning up, it appeared to be quite a bit of landfill stuff, and this one, that was not a previous one.
Is that basically because the statements went out, is that why this?
Corey, can you have me on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Usually when the taxes will first go out, we really have a lot of the places that have to be known.
Right.
So that's, you'll see an increase in the first couple.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just checking, thank you.
More evidence for your new software. All right, if there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve?
I move, I move we approve August 2017 tax releases and refund.
Motion by Commissioner Brigham, second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor of approving the property releases, please raise your right hand.
Rhea, before you step away, I understand you went to some training recently?
Yes, I did, sir.
Do you care to tell us what it was?
It was the Intro to Local Government course, done by the USC Store government. It is the first step to becoming a certified finance officer. I did take Kerry with me to Deputy Finance Officer, and we learned some interesting things, a lot of things that weren't doing pretty good for a small county, with very minimal staff. There's a lot of counties that have a whole lot more staff than us, and they're accomplishing a lot less than Kerry and I, between the two of us are accomplishing, so I'm very proud of us for that. We've identified a few things that we are going to change and implement, updating some policies that you'll hear about the next month or so, and just, you know, fine tuning some things that we've got to do to get right in with LGC.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Forrest, you're up.
A few updates, and a couple of action items. Just in the last little bit, I know everyone's been watching television for the last two weeks, and for the last year, all we've seen is politics, politics, for the last two weeks it's been weather. And as the early forecasts showed that Hurricane Irma could potentially have a significant impact on North Carolina, and then it moved westward where it was going to hit us really bad, and for us, it moved farther westward, and it weakened before it got this far north, we really saw minimal effect. But leading up to that, we did prepare, working with the state and working through the system that we have in the county, through our emergency operations plan, which is a binder that's about that thick, that shows basically for any contingency, what who all's involved, how the chain of command functions, how a state of emergency is declared, that sort of thing. It has been, probably since the snowstorm in 2009, was the last major countywide event. There have been some flash flooding events, things like that, but the last countywide event required shelters to be open, which our Department of Social Services is responsible for setting that up, things that involve our health department, multiple departments. It's been several years, and many of the people who are now in those jobs were not with the county, or were not in those roles at that time. So sort of knowing by Friday, Thursday evening, Friday, that the forecast was unpredictable, we did proceed as sort of viewing this as preparation for worst-case scenario, and also being good practice in the event of something actually occurring. So Teresa Ogles, interim Emergency Services Director, is... who's currently over nine-one-one in emergency management, worked with all of our department heads, law enforcement, utilities, fire departments, all of those folks to make sure they knew what they were supposed to do. Our fire departments generally know that, but our department heads, that sort of thing, if they've not been doing it before, it was inexperienced. So there were daily calls with the western branch of State Emergency Management to hear the forecast, hear what's going on in those roles, where emergency management's role would be to get resources from outside the county if we need them, inside the county if we have them, outside the county if we need them. Chairman Gentry was on hand for those because if there is an emergency, it needs to be declared. The chairman is the individual who declares that. Madison County did not do that. Some counties did, but we waited to see what happened. There were like about fifteen trees down on roads reported yesterday, last night, and some power outages were fairly limited and very little rain. So everything came through just fine, very obviously. But what I'm telling you is, we'll be talking with department heads Friday at the department head meeting to sort of start talking about what went well, what could be improved in the future, what questions are unanswered, and then going through some more formal debriefings with all those people over the next little bit to prepare in case we ever do have a significant event, particularly heading into the winter. We want to be ready in case something does come up. We have, as I've sent you all an email, we do have a retirement, our, after fifteen years, is our maintenance director, Alan Hunter, is retiring on September twenty-ninth. He, there will be a reception for him Friday, September twenty-second at three o'clock at the Madison County Library. It's going to be very different without Alan. He has done a lot in this county, including moving, helping lead the effort to move county government during the oh-four flood. So he was really hoping, from someone who experienced the worst case since two thousand four, that we would dodge the worst in this event. A number of projects that we see that we benefit from in Madison County, and just the perfect personality to deal with the different pressures that come with that job. And his work is very visible. And people will come out of their work, it's not as visible, and start telling him what's wrong with his. And he knows how to handle that pretty well. So please join us for that event. The position is posted to attempt to fill it going forward. Expect that to be figured out later this month. The, an event going on in Yancey County in October, traveling Vietnam Memorial Wall will be on display October twelfth through fifteenth at Mount Harriet High School. That'll be open twenty-four hours a day to the general public. And on Friday, October thirteenth, from six o'clock to seven o'clock in the evening, there will be a memorial service honoring the Madison County Vietnam veterans who were killed or missing in action. It should be a.
That date and time again?
Friday, October thirteenth, at six o'clock.
Friday the thirteenth.
And there is a meeting this Thursday, anyone who'd like to attend with the organizers, three o'clock to the finance office, just come on by, very additional details. Or if anything's changed since I last got those dates, somebody's sure to let you know. I think they made an effort to attempt to communicate with the schools and see if they can get some field trips handled over there. So it's a special opportunity to have this coming through our area. Any questions? On surplus property, you have an offer approximately fifty-seven acre parcels of multiple lots, total of fifty-seven acres in Holt Mountain. The assessed value, tax value is two million seven hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Taxes and fees, oh, they're two hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Your offer is for eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's up from your previous offer of seventy-two thousand. The annual tax revenue based on the current assessment of the property would be sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So over five years, that would be eighty-three thousand two seventy-eight. That's all of being taxed as individual parcels in a subdivision. If someone combined those or made other changes, you could see a change in values there. When they build, you can also see a positive change in values. You have the option of accepting the bid and beginning the ten-day upset period, rejecting the bid, or countering.
Forrest, it's obvious that we're more than likely not going to get the tax value of the property. I don't know, eighty-seven thousand seems to be still a little bit on the low side for that, for that amount of acreage. If we were to counter, it would still go into an upset bid process, correct?
Okay. I have a question, Mr. Laws. If we were to use this as an example, and we wanted to list this property, how long would it take, the contract that we have now, to get that finalized and get this listed on the multiple listing?
I think you can do that right now, I think.
Ready to go. It would take, I'm guessing, a few weeks. We talked to the Realtor, she said she kind of with some prices in a couple of hours. But I just know, between the other things that go on for her and everyone else, that I would say a couple of weeks.
She's going to, I mean, even if we sign that listing agreement tomorrow, it's going to take her some time to gather all of the information to put it on M L A. That would be a lot.
But because she knows that we're going to sign the agreement, she is gathering the information. So it's not, she's not waiting for the agreement.
I move that we accept the offer and begin the upset bid process.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the offer, and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor of accepting the offer, please raise your right hand. All those opposed to accepting the current offer? Do we have any other on this?
I think we need to list it on the, with our real estate firm. I would make a motion that we do that. I mean, we all agreed that that's what we wanted this real estate company to do.
You made that a formal motion?
Make that a formal motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Brigham, that we list this piece of property with our real estate agent. That is now in the process of going forward fairly quickly.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Considering that the commission rate on vacant land is ten percent.
She's doing six, she agreed to do.
She, she agreed to do six? Okay, I'm sorry, still six percent. I mean, I think, I think if you, if you begin the upset bid process without having to pay a commission, once it's all said and done, you still have the opportunity to reject it if you're not satisfied with it. I don't understand what difference the upset bid process is going to make versus having a real estate agent involved. And you're going to pay her six percent to find out what the real value of the property is when we can do that through the upset bid process. That's my two cents worth.
A Realtor will advertise the property in places where this upset bid process hasn't, won't even be noticed. And to me, that's what we need to do. The property is going to be viewed through the Realtor by people out of the state, people out of, you know, you know, who knows where, where they wouldn't even know about this if it was posted, you know, as an upset bid process in a local paper, where the Realtor would advertise and reach out, and more people would see it. Therefore, I think it would bring more money. I think that six percent is a small amount for the amount of value for this property. That's my.
What do you think a value is? We go, we get through there. When we keep coming up with this tax value, this land is not going to be worth ten percent of this tax value at this time.
That's correct. But even, even if we got two hundred thousand dollars for it versus eighty-seven thousand,
yeah, that's true.
Is that not a benefit to the county to put it in a Realtor's hand?
I'm not saying it can bring it. I'm just saying it's not worth two million dollars.
No, I agree. I don't think that it will bring the two million, but I feel that.
It would.
Yeah, I feel that it would bring, it would bring ten percent of that.
Well, right now, we basically, we have one bidder. And if we accept this bid, I mean, they're not going to bid against themselves. So then we'd be faced with the same decision again. I would just like to see it put on the market to, to see what might happen. And it may be that we come back to this at some later point and entertain an offer if they're still interested in buying it.
Any other discussion? We have a motion before us to put the property as a listed property. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes to list the property. Forrest?
Also regarding surplus property, I had an update on the drop building. Since you all, most of this information, but just want to, can't remember when everything's come up, so I'll just go through it again in case there's any new information. The drop building, purchasers currently in their ninety-day due diligence period, where they're given a number of inspections on the building and determining whether they're going to move forward in the end. In addition to their inspections, they are also looking at zoning. School system is moving out of their supplies out of the basement that we're going to today and yesterday, but weather, so they're going to do it tomorrow. So that will be good. But the big issue with the building, could be potentially many issues in the due diligence process, but one known issue is the zoning, which is controlled by the town of Marsh Hill. Currently, that building is zoned for educational or institutional use. As long as the county owns it or the school system owns it, it can be used for a school without any change in zoning. As soon as it's sold to someone and put in private hands under Marsh Hill's ordinance, it would automatically go to residential, single-family, and duplex zoning. So anything other than that for a private owner would have to be approved by the planning board in Marsh Hill, potentially the Board of Alderman. I'm not sure if it goes to them or not, and go through their review. First, it would go through the town manager's review, I guess, as the zoning officer. So the purchaser, from what I understand, has not yet submitted an application to the town that he has communicated with the town manager regarding the prospect of commercial or multifamily use. Indication that he's received and I've received is the property will not be rezoned for commercial use. And it's a little unclear whether multifamily is a possibility. Again, that decision is up to the town's planning board. As you know, the property has, there's been extensive discussion over the past three years about this building. We know that school system doesn't have a use for the building as it is. County doesn't have a use for the building as it is. The town doesn't have a use for the building as it is. College doesn't have a use for the building as it is. I say not a use. If we had a lot of money, all those people might have a use for it. Given everything that everyone sees, that's sort of where we've been. There's not a volunteer group that's come together willing to run a community center. That was tried, and it didn't work. During the bid process, there's also an opportunity for people to come together in the community and pull money to submit a bid. So here we are, everyone's had to sort of make a tough decision. Most of the people were not involved in not using that building or turning it over to whoever years ago. Most of those boards have all changed, commissioners and school board. But just like the school boards had to make a decision, a tough decision that they don't want, don't have a use for, counties had to make that decision. And now the town's got to weigh the impact on the neighborhood and the potential value of the building. So as we look at that, we'll see how the process plays out. But that's sort of where it is right now. And that's, that's town of Marsh Hill, as it should be, because that's who, that's who lives there, and that's who they answer to. But I'll keep posted on how that turns out, and we'll see how it develops. Any questions on that? Okay. You have some upcoming appointments. And I actually think you have, from what I see here, you have one applicant for the nursing adult care board that you could appoint. One year initial term.
I didn't see the name listed on there. Is that Jim Kirkland?
Elmer Dickens.
Oh, Elmer Dickens. Did we get Jim Kirkland appointed?
There is one that we got in that I have sent to Land and Sky that we're still waiting for approval to put him on our list.
Okay.
It's supposed to, the state has changed the rules. You have to actually have your training now before you can be appointed by the board. And that came down a couple of weeks ago, that the state has changed the rules. So it's a longer process with the nursing home board now.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. And then last, the additional item we have from Dr. Cosby is a request they're working to replace or purchase new band uniforms for the high schools that have more than twenty years old, and they don't have enough for every member of the band. Believe it or not, the estimated cost for band uniforms is thirty-five thousand dollars. But Dr. Cosby has talked with some folks who have been generous enough to donate twenty thousand dollars as a challenge. And the plan that Dr. Cosby presented to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education approved, was for, in addition to the twenty thousand from those private donors, five thousand in various community fundraising, five thousand from the Board of Education, and five thousand from the county. So the request in front of you is for five thousand from the county. If that's something you wish to do, we do have eighty thousand dollars in grant matching money that was budgeted for this year from the economic development and education sales tax. We do have thirty-three thousand earmarked for that line for a grant matching for an economic development project. That leaves forty-seven thousand dollars in that line. You wish to take five thousand of that for this purpose.
Forrest, if you could just tell the folks in the room the amount of money we have given the school thus far?
Two point six million, if I remember correctly.
That sounds right.
Just, just current expense, not any capital outlay.
Right.
That sort of thing.
Right. And as I recall, when Laurel School was closed, we did not reduce the amount that we gave. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I have no problem, I just wanted to make those two points. But I have no problem with making a motion that we. commit five thousand dollars to the school system for the band uniforms.
Second.
Put that in a form of motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Brigham. Other discussion from anyone? There be no further discussion. All those in favor of the request from Dr. Cosby for five thousand dollars, let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion is approved. Forrest? All right. We are now down to the time on our agenda. We're under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight dash eleven. We will now enter into executive session for discussion of personnel. Is there a motion for executive session? Mr. Brigham, that made the motion? Second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor of executive session, please raise your right hand. We've ordered breakfast pizza, if you wish to stay. Same, same traditional, gentlemen.
Good to hear, Jackie. How you doing, brother? Holler at me.